Need to approve the minutes of the January sixteenth and the February first meetings.
I'm making motion to approve minutes of the January sixteenth meeting. I wasn't here on the February meetings. I can't really vote on that, but I don't know.
I'll second your approval of the motion.
Okay.
You second the motion and approve the January sixteenth meeting? Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say aye. Motion carried. Also voted on that. And for the February first meeting, I'll make the motion to approve. And I will second that motion. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You want to call the same sign and you abstain, right?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Financial report.
You've got a tally of them in front of you. It's.
She only works about three months out of the year, doesn't she?
So that is the first quarter. And at the first quarter, you should be around twenty-five percent of your budget. Um, there's nothing real significant. The general fund revenue is over the twenty-five percent, but we know that because taxes come in at the first of the year. Uh, the general fund expenses without the ARPA expense in there is just, is twenty-six point five percent, which is slightly over, but we also pay insurance and some annual things upfront in October. And the utility fund revenue is actually over twenty-five percent, and the expenditures are slightly below, so that's good for the utility fund. We get most of our revenue at the end of the year on that fund, so. Our bank balances have a very high total for the end of December because of all the tax money that we've collected. And pretty much everything is on track. Uh, nothing significant, nothing out of the ordinary in, in October, November, or December.
Okay.
If you look these over and have any questions, of course, you can always.
You have any questions for Leslie? You've got the sales tax. It's interesting that the tracking of that is still very healthy.
Yes, that our up-to-date sales tax, yes.
Okay. Any questions for Leslie? Or for JJ? Okay, the Board of City Commission may discuss and take action on the following agenda items. Item number one, discussion consideration of Eastern Chamber Commerce Designation, uh, Ribs Cook-Off Wine Fest and Jazz Festival April thirteenth as an open container event, IAW order twelve dash seven eight one dated one twelve twelve, and designating the event area as the premises for the public consumption of alcoholic beverages, uh, at tw- adult twenty-one years of age or older during the event. Provided that the event is sponsored by the Texas or TABC, the beverages are distributed by a licensed TABC permit holder, security personnel are present, and the event area is posted with appropriate barriers and signage.
Yes. Um, this is something that we've done for the last, since I've been here, um, for Rick's Ribs. They, we usually set up the tent, and it's near that point that we have to go through this. But this year, they are moving it to the lumberyard and are gonna have it under the new pavilion. I asked them to go ahead and come and present like they normally do. There's, I'm not exactly sure that they actually need our permission, but to keep us informed and stuff like that, it's, I think, I thought it would be a good idea until we can get clarification one hundred percent.
Well, I would like to ask, we've got this one and another one coming up to talk about. I would like to, if we can, and legally and it makes everybody happy, TABC, any legal deal, insurance companies, everybody happy, that we give you as a city manager permission to sign these, sign off on these from the city, when we have to have, they have to have a letter from the city to do something, then you able to do that. It doesn't have to come from the commission. I'm assuming it can come from the city. As long as they've got a letter from the city.
Yes.
And we give you as a city manager permission to do that. I would also add to that, when you do that, to make us aware that you've done it, so we're aware what's going on in towns. But having people, putting this on an agenda, having you have to come up here, you have to come up here and do things. Uh, if we can, let's streamline this process. Do you have any problems with that? Somebody make a motion.
None whatsoever. I'll make a motion that we.
I said make a motion to adjourn. Hey now, go ahead and make a motion. Y'all have any questions? We have any questions? Yeah, we'll, we'll let, if you do, but I, do y'all agree probably with what I just said? Richard, in a short, read and digest version, we, we've got item number one, what we're looking at. Let's give the permission to, uh, for the chamber to have this Wine Fest Ribs Cook-Off, uh, deal. And, and I would like to give permission to the city manager to do this in the future for these type of events. Our, our public has voted that we're a wet town and we can sell alcohol, so that's not. And, and I think these happen because we own some of these facilities and some of that stuff.
Yes.
But give the city manager permission.
Right.
And then he keeps us updated. Uh, generally, we have a pretty good heads up that this is happening.
You bet.
And get that done.
Right.
Would you like to make a motion?
Um, yeah, well, do I need to, I mean, do I have, do I need to abstain from this or not? I don't think so.
To keep me from drinking? No, you don't need to thank me for this at all.
Yeah. Well, I'll make a motion that we authorize the city manager to, uh, present a letter of approval to the Chamber of Commerce for the events where alcohol.
And future events.
And, yeah, it's going to be served in any future events that the city manager is authorized to take care of that. Ready?
A motion by Shirley and a second by Richard for us to not only approve this, but in the future to allow the city manager to, to do this and to, to sign these off from the city's behalf.
Before we vote, can we talk about this? This, we had a discussion this morning just about where exactly it is.
Okay, there should be in or behind it. Okay. So the highlighted portion in here is different. Jump in on this. This is just what we're, the consumption area where we'll have signage.
Under the pavilion, right?
Well, under, but then this is.
It goes outside of the pavilion.
Like the sidewalk.
It'll walk around. There's gonna be food trucks.
Right, all along the front.
From the lumberyard, so our thinking is, and maybe some seating out there even, so.
I don't, I don't, yes.
Okay, 'cause it's state highway?
Yes, because we don't have a, basically a wine and stroll ordinance.
We need one of those.
You know, basically, I, I believe it's supposed to be in a designated area.
Okay.
You know, I mean, that's something that we would have to discuss in passion ordinance too, I think, to make that. I know other cities have that, Granbury, Fredericksburg, et cetera, but I, I don't think.
We did that previously though. That was the rules we can do within that guideline, and TABC actually signed off on it, where we were able to, like the wine tent, that was the premises of the wine tent, but then we were able to take it out, and we did that whole premises, 'cause that's where the signs we have up that say, no alcohol past that point.
So it was a whole courthouse area.
So just like the courthouse, um, so Commerce and Lamar, and that was it. So they could stroll within those parameters, and then they could not go past that point, or then, of course, then their law will be arrested.
Yeah, okay. Um, as long as there's a set point, I don't have a problem with this, but.
And that little highlighted thing is what we are planning on. Oh, you can't see it on the.
Yeah.
This, this area.
Let me tell you, yeah.
So, let's pick it again, and then we're gonna have, this is the.
We need to get color.
Yeah, and the point of this is that we may not, we'll put a stop sign wherever we, we're gonna run food trucks here and maybe back here. So I just went to the corner of the Conley here. And then, so it's just, we might not use that part. We might put a sign here, 'cause then we may not.
But you're gonna have appropriate signage.
Yes, and it'll be like here, here.
See what's stated in this, see what we just made a motion.
I just, yeah, I wanna make sure that.
It's gonna be lots of signage.
It's got the, it's got the, it says in here, what we just read off on, is the appropriate signage and, and everything.
Right.
Probably barriers and signage.
Our, our thinking.
This is the little park, right?
Yeah. And actually, it was, yeah. I think I had drawn one of those.
And old Brown's Garden.
Yeah. Well, this is not Brown's Garden. This is that little spot where the, there's like a little park with the families and all that. Yeah, yeah, I see it.
This is what, this apparently wasn't, yeah, that was. But anyhow, and so we're gonna, it, it kinda depends on where these food trucks hit. My thinking is, we're gonna stop and ride, you know, like however far they go, or vendors, or whatever we do. So I, I ask for all of it, and then we may not use it all. Does that make sense?
No, and I'm okay with that, if, as long as we stay within.
Right.
Those parameters, so we don't get in trouble allowing.
If we don't have something blocking this street here, like food trucks, they'd probably just stop right there at the end of the food trucks. So we'll send this one.
Are you good with that? Good. We know you're good with it.
That would definitely have any trouble with us, with people that are gonna have to monitor.
Oh, you got any question? You good?
I mean, it's, uh, the front sidewalk would be my only concern. Rhymes Garden or the stuff behind would be fine, but you're talking about putting them right on a main street, a state highway that's gonna be fairly busy.
And what I was saying is, we're gonna have food trucks here, and then where they stop is where I'm gonna stop it. Like, if, if there's just food trucks right here, then it's gonna be, don't go beyond this point. Don't go beyond this point. But, oh, well, this is against them, so they're gonna like start here, and they're gonna be bumper to bumper, or as close as we can get to the trucks. And they're not, and I'll have signs even between them. I mean, you know, no, no, you can't go, don't go beyond this point. But this will be easy to mark off. I'm hearing this noise in my ear, so. And then, uh, this, which has a building, and then back here will be some.
In the future, you can handle this. Get the super place and do all that outside of this mission.
Yeah, unless we ran trucks, I think we do something crazy, then, then you show, that's gonna, like, those are gonna be my barrier for the street. Does that make sense? And so.
No.
So, yeah, well, but you can deal, I mean, we're not gonna have that capability in here. You can deal with that to come up.
And they gotta come out.
Talk about it and sign off on it.
Where if they came out and had a glass of wine and sat on the sidewalk between the food trucks and the building, if they could.
Are we good?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Are you good with voting? You wanna abstain?
Nah, I made the motion.
That's okay. You make the motion, not the vote. Make the motion. Okay, item number one is out of the way. Uh, number two, discuss consideration of the historic preservation board recommendation for awarding additional funds for left-of-art. Whoa, this is for the library.
Yes.
What a bomb.
Uh, Terry's here gonna kinda go over it.
Well, I put a synopsis in your, in your packets about it. As you can see by the pictures that we included, that the library ran into a lot of problems when they went to pull that roof off.
Yeah.
In fact, they discovered at some point, part of that building had burned.
How did all the debris end up in the library? Did it just cave in?
I think that when they were taking the, all of that roof off, it just all started falling in. So it's, it was quite a mess. So anyway, and it ran into a lot more money to fix than what was budgeted and what we had allowed, uh, in their grant.
So you're going forty-six ten again?
Yes, so we're gonna, well, yes, we're gonna get on the balance of what we have.
Yeah, it's the balance, and nobody's, nobody's applying.
Nobody's applying for anything else, so this way it'll help them continue on with their project.
And just zero out that account.
Yeah.
So we're, that's the twenty twenty-four count we just zeroed out?
Yes.
Yes.
Historic preservation account.
But they, but they had already had to apply.
Well, I understand. I just took that out for the rest of the year.
Yes, which we started again in April one.
Yeah.
Or twenty-five, so.
Physical year.
Yes. It's, it's a weird timetable how they, the historic.
Well, and we changed it so that we coincide with the city's budget period. And used to, it just started anytime.
Twenty, April doesn't coincide.
That's when we'll start, uh, uh, accepting applications for the twenty twenty-five.
For twenty twenty-five, okay. I'm with you. That'd take me long. Need a motion to approve, uh, the store preservation grant money forty-six, four thousand six hundred and ten dollars for the library to help them finish up that project.
I'll make the motion that we approve reference number two to, uh, provide four thousand six hundred and ten dollars to the historic preservation board for their roof repaired.
Second.
A motion from James and a second from Richard to approve this. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Discussion number three, discuss consideration of order of twenty-four dash eight nine nine in order to the city of Easton, Texas, temporary reducing the speed limit proportion of Interstate twenty within the city limits of the city of Easton, which will be under construction. And when did we ever start doing this?
This is something new from TexDOT. We have never had to do this before, but TexDOT contacted us and said that it's something new within, I don't know if it's the legislation or something, that they have to, I, I don't know what, what they would do if we said, no, you're not gonna lower the speed limit, but.
Well, after this is over, look like the speed limit ninety-five after that too.
Exactly, I mean. This is something that TexDOT is offering statewide now that anytime that, within their city limit, your city limits on a highway.
It comes from larger cities that have had some issues.
Yeah.
They're just doing it statewide.
Is this because of the work that's being done out there, the lights?
No, this is, this is on I-2.
This is on I-2.
It's like, doesn't anything to do with that?
No. No, I guess they're, they're fixing to start a, a repaving project or something on twenty, and during that time period, you, you'll have the speed limit lowered, and now we have to sign off saying, yes, you can lower the speed limit in our town.
Oh, so are y'all gonna control the interstate? Prime operator. Or a chance to.
You wanna watch out?
It's a remedy.
That is a new fight. Notice the finance lady has that. Okay, this will be reducing the speed limit from seventy-five to sixty, and I guess we make that decision. Is that, are they gonna tell us when this is gonna be done? Are they just gonna do it when anyone's here?
I think, once we pass our ordinance, and they have not set a time that they will begin.
That's just gonna allow them, when they get ready to do it, then they'll change, okay. Entertaining motion for order twenty-four eight nine nine.
I do have a question, though. Why does it say that appropriate signage shall be placed on Interstate twenty by the city?
I'm trying to read that.
The Brownwood District, TexDOT, and/or the TexDOT contractor.
I didn't read that. Hold on.
I don't wanna get inside me. It's their assignment, but they, you know.
That appropriate signage shall be placed, uh, by the city, the Brownwood, and/or TexDOT contractor. I'm guessing that it's basically saying, one of those three is gonna put the signs out.
And they take me as one, I won't be.
It's gonna be the.
The, uh.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do the contract.
Exactly.
Okay. And then I have a question. Is this one of those ordinances that only requires one reading, even though we normally approve an ordinance with two?
No, we will, we will, we'll have to have required two, because that's what our, our charter says.
Passed one before that had to do with funding, not ending it.
And I think if you do it in an emergency situation, there's some language in there that you can do, an ordinance, read it once in our charter, and, but I don't think this would fall into that criteria.
I thought the ordinance had started over when we started the new year. I guess it don't.
The first, the twenty-four started.
The twenty-four.
It says twenty-four, it doesn't say twenty-three.
What?
Resolutions start over.
The ordinance is done, okay. All right, entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-four dash eight nine nine on the first reading.
I'll second.
Got a motion from Shirley and a second from Richard to approve ordinance twenty-four dash eight nine nine. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number four, discussion and consideration of renewing the contract for collection of delinquent multiple court fines and fees.
Uh, yes, commission. Um, we use a company called NDVA, or you can read it in the query. That's, uh, Bragg and Allen. I don't know how to say it.
It's in here somewhere.
Yeah, they handle all our court fines when we send them to collections. It was just time to update our contract with them, a little overdue. It's a five-year contract, you know, it's basically the same contract that we've had for years. You know, they take a percentage upfront of collections to cover their costs. We have been, at least I have, and Dina has, Court has, they've been great. They're, they're very attentive and to our needs, and when we have a question, they are right up front and, and get our questions answered.
They send us a statement every month, and, uh, there's a report that we can run out of the court to make sure that the two agree with each other and.
How much do they actually get involved with our business?
I'm sorry?
How much do they actually do, not get involved with the business, what we do? How much do they impact us being able to collect these fees? Do they do a pretty good job?
Yes.
Yes.
They do.
I don't have an exact.
And they still, is the thirty percent still the same?
It's the same.
And there also are tech collection people also.
With the county and stuff like that also. And I think they, we have a person, what the county does with NDVA stationed at the courthouse. So, and the, the gentleman that handles the court here, he stops by.
Regularly.
Once, once a month at least. To check on everything.
All right, entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, pass reference number four dated two twenty twenty-four, renewing the contract to NDVA for collections of delinquents, municipal court fines and fees.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by James and a second by Shirley to approve the fine collections by Mr. Sherry, Valesky, Bragg, and Allen, NDVA. I just wanted to say that. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number five, discussion and consideration resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh four, continuing participation of the steering committee of the city served by ATMS, and James will abstain from this discussion.
Uh, yes, commission, this is just one of those yearly deals where we, um, become part of one of these steering committees that, uh, challenges the rates put forth by ATMS. Um, our contribution is five, five cents per capita of the people. I'd have to go back and look what our invoice was. It was about four hundred dollars. Um, again, this is just like we talked about, we aren't big enough to stand out on our own, to challenge the rate and go on our own, because we're not big enough to fight them. So, uh, we really need to be part of these steering committees.
It's five cents per capita.
Uh huh. Nineteen fifty, yeah.
Nineteen.
Nope, nope, that wasn't right. Oops, sorry.
The hundred and ninety dollars.
Yeah, I, I mean, I couldn't remember the exact.
Well, you said four hundred a while ago. That'd be ten cents.
And that may be the encore one. Is that the encore one? Okay, sorry.
It's been practiced for years, I think.
Yeah, and they just.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I move we pass, uh, reference. Number five, for the discussion consideration resolution twenty twenty-four oh four, continuing participation of the steering committee of cities served by the ATMS.
I'll second that.
A motion by Richard and a second by Shirley to approve, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero four. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Item number six, discussion and consideration of the Fine Arts Association hosting a Grammy Dinner Majestic Cabaret on April twenty-fifth to twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. And I make the same comment again that we had before, we need to streamline this process and, and give the city manager approval.
And it'll look like this, you don't have access to.
This gonna be in the upstairs balcony?
No, this is gonna be on the stage. So I don't know if anybody who's been with Paramount that's into the cabaret, into the stars. Uh, they started this in twenty twenty, had a lot of success. We're gonna serve heavier barbs and desserts. We're gonna set about twenty tables, as you can see, on the stage, extended. We're gonna have a full band up there, and then we're gonna have about ten to twelve different local singers sing, uh, a song that won an Grammy Award. Special event theater wanted to put on. Uh, we're wanting to serve beer and wine there, and that's really what we need from y'all. It's just a letter to say that we're all right to use the facility to serve alcohol and.
Y'all have to get special insurance when you serve alcohol? Y'all do all that. Do you provide that to the city when you do it?
Y'all will be an additional insured.
Huh?
Y'all will be an additional insured on the insurance policy.
Well, I just think when you bring this in the future to the city manager, you need to bring that type of stuff, so he knows you've got it all. I just thank, thank you or anybody else for doing that.
Well, I don't have the policy until probably a day or two before, 'cause it's only for a certain amount of time.
Well, you can put that you've done that, but they need to know that you've got that insurance policy in place.
If you would.
They said this, if we're an additional insured, we get a copy.
Yeah. Yeah, the, the carrier should automatically.
Yeah, 'cause we're an additional insured.
Okay.
And so is this the same thing every night, Dina? I mean.
Every, every night, well, it's, we can only serve up to like eighty people, I think, with twenty different tables. So if we sell out every night, we'll have eighty each night, uh, and it's three nights, that way more people can come.
Were it twenty tables or nineteen?
It's really, I think it's gonna be nineteen. I say twenty, 'cause we've moved a little bit of stuff around. We still need to get the stage set up and just put it out there.
But you said nineteen.
That's what we're shooting for up there. It's probably eighteen smaller ones and one bigger one.
Okay. Entertaining motion.
I'll make the motion, we approve reference number six dated twenty-two twenty twenty-four to allow the Fine Arts, Eastern Fine Arts Association, uh, to host the Grammys music when, allowing our city manager to provide that letter for this year and any upcoming events they may have.
Got a motion from James.
Second.
Second from Richard, to allow the Fine Arts Association to have a Grammy Dinner Majestic April twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and the city manager approves any future request. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, city manager briefing.
Um, as you, I don't know if anybody's noticed, they've started on the channel clearing portion of it. There's been some equipment up and down, clearing some, uh, debris in trees and stuff. Back, that's the first part of the scope. We're still moving along, um, trying to get the home buyouts complete at this point. Street designs are, uh, almost done and ready to get cost estimates done on those. Uh, we had a meeting about the flood study, uh, the, they're addressing the final comments from Texas Water Development Board. Everybody's seen the lights and the construction going out there at Main Street and twenties. They're moving right along. You can see where they set, have the pillars set to put the lights and stuff in. Uh, I don't think it's gonna take too much longer, because they got in and got on it. Um, that's really about it. Um, I will say March thirteenth through fifteenth.
Yeah, we're gonna leave the evening of the thirteenth, afternoon of the thirteenth.
Uh, March thirteenth through fifteenth, Leslie and I have to go to Waco to do our public investment.
How about the funds? Training.
And it's required by law that we have, she and I have this training every two years, so we have to go to Waco and have that done. Thirteenth to the fifteenth will be out. And I will remind y'all, when it gets closer, that is on my mind.
Okay.
That's really about all I have.
Well, yeah. Any other questions for JJ? Okay, did they give a timeline on how it can take the channel thing out?
Uh, they have, they have ninety days to per the contract to, to finish this phase one, which phase one is the North Fork, all the way to where it meets the South Fork, Weaver Creek, uh, Ringling Dam, and Lake Eastland. There's been some issues with Lake Eastland and environmental clearance on it. We had clearance, and then the state came back and said, hold on a second. And, uh, so they're doing all that first, while we're working with the state for the Lake Eastland, but everything else is, is good to go.
What about the streets?
Uh, the streets, they're in the final design, fixing to be ready for cost, um, analysis, exactly how many yards they're gonna need and stuff like that.
Trying to get this together?
Yes.
Any timeline?
Hopefully in March.
Starting when?
Friday.
Got to be specific here. Okay, uh, code compliant, Tony?
Commissioners, uh, for January, you can see the numbers on there are very low. Um, Terry and I have been waiting to get within code to learn our new system that y'all approved. And the timetable they originally gave us, which we were trying to leave windows for, uh, kept getting pushed back. Uh, we, we had one set of training and it was basically just making sure that they were doing what we're asking them to do as far as for the permitting section of it. Um, and then there was supposed to be more training. Well, that trainer dumped us to another trainer and a couple of the windows we were supposed to leave open, they hadn't got back with us. We are actually signed up to do training for different code. Well, I'm Thursday. We're supposed to have some hands-on training with the new software this Thursday at like ten in the morning. Um, in, in, in that time, I know Terry has been trying to not go back into Comcat and start fresh in in code, but this February, he's, he's got back into it. So February's numbers are going to be more like they normally were. And then as soon as we can get out of Comcat into in code, we'll just pick back up from there. But this month just looks, you know, sad.
It's just, it's just dragged on too long and.
Do you have a timeline? I mean, do they have any kind of a?
Um, current timeline is supposed to, we're supposed to have some training this week and I think next week as well, on the original window that they set up. And then it, we're supposed to be wrapping up the beginning of March, but I think we're going to be going into the middle of March to be wrapped up on training and go live in the software.
They originally came back and said it was going to be late April. And I told I back and said, that's not satisfactory, that, that we just can't hang on that long, you know? So then they came back and bumped it up.
Yeah.
A month.
So Terry has started in February, the numbers will show more like they used to be. We're, we're going to work all we can until we can, they finally get it open and then we'll just shut everything in in code and. Thank you, Truckee. Um, that's it for code uh, for right now, but for um, uh, development here in town, uh, happy to tell y'all that Texadellia is supposed to be open at seven in the morning. We're excited about that. Tom uh, went down there to visit with them just to check in. They come up here to talk to Terry earlier and he got to visiting with them and he got pulled aside by somebody else and they left before he could ask him. So Tom went down to check for us and um, while Tom was down there, and I know this is going to sound very self-serving, but it's not. I wish Tom was here so he could tell you this. He said that the gentleman that we've worked with there who uh, came and pulled, you know, started pulling permits and getting everything set up and has been working with the city, went on and on and on with Tom about how easy Eastland has been to get going. How, but everybody from utilities to planning to the girls up front to uh, fire, oh yeah, he was very complimentary on Joe coming through with his inspection form and just about how he's gone out of his way to help them any way he could and make sure that they're going to hold to the code that we have adopted. And he was just, he had nothing but great things to say about um, Eastland as far as a place to, to be a business. And we, we appreciate, I really appreciate that. I know that some people like to go on uh, social media and, and talk about how bad of a place that we can be when we, we, we do everything but build a business more than we could. But and on top of that, we've got good news for uh, for the city. Uh, we have a pre-development meeting with a company in the morning. Um, and this is going to be something that I know a lot of people in Eastland have been wanting. I don't know if I can say anything yet. And based on how hard the freight was, I don't think it wants anything. I think we'll just wait until they open.
Yeah.
But we're really.
When they put up the sign, everybody enough.
Yeah, everybody.
We don't want to do anything.
But we're really excited. This is something that we, we hoped we would have seen about ten years ago. They ended up, they, they've come back and they're, they're wanting to do something here. So we're going to do all we can to get them helped out, to get going. Um, and then I had a call right at the end of the day, a gentleman had bought a piece of property on Main Street, uh, just wanted to build a brand-new business here, brand-new building, brand-new business. And so we're excited for that. Whenever I get more um, concrete information, I'll bring that along too. So I think that's all I have for right now.
Well, I'll back the train up on something you said. When you said this is going to sound very self-serving, uh, don't say that at all. Uh, you guys have earned this. Fire department been complimented, police department been complimented, y'all have been complimented, city hall has been complimented in this meeting tonight. And I think that's special. And I sit around this room, this board up here, makes our job a whole lot easier.
Well, and we appreciate it. We're glad that we can help because that's all we want is we want Eastland to have everything it deserves and, and to thrive. Now that, just a little heads up also, next month, we will be bringing two ordinances uh, to y'all to take a look at. Uh, we're looking at updating the fence rules to give more options for the citizens um, as far as for fencing, uh, different types of materials and get some things ironed out so there's no ambiguity to the rules. Cause right now we got basically four rules and depending on who's reading them, they can be interpreted in a bunch of different ways. And so we're trying to get that taken care of. And then also looking at updating um, a possibility of duplexes with a specific use permit um, in the future. Right now they're only allowed in multifamily districts. Um, so we have some people that'd be interested in bringing them to town to bring more housing options, but that would be something that we need to, to discuss. So those should be coming next month.
Next month?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate what y'all do, all of you.
Thanks, sir.
That's great. Who's next? Chief of Fleet?
Yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
For January, we answered two hundred and seventy-six calls for service and the rest of twelve people. We had forty cases turned in. Uh, we had seven agency assists, three hundred and eighty business checks. We worked thirteen traffic crashes, eight domestic violence cases. We filed ten cases with the district attorney's office, one, two cases with juvenile probation. Uh, traffic enforcement, we wrote a hundred and fifty-six citations, a hundred and ninety-four warnings for three hundred and fifty contacts. On the animal control side of things, uh, she wrote seven citations, six warnings. She had a hundred and twenty-five calls for service, thirteen impounds, nine adopted out, and one quarantined. Uh, we're excited, uh, recruit Rose has passed his final exam at the police academy. So all we're waiting on now is for him to take his state test. So we should have him out on the road by March eleventh. And then recruit Rodriguez uh, should be ready to go by June. So we'll get those vacancies filled and get back to full staff and get working.
Great, great, very good. Any questions for the Chief Pit? Chief Wilson?
Thank you. First of all, I want to apologize for that brief disruption. I think we had a little misunderstanding. We got caught in the middle stream there, so I want to apologize for that.
Don't let that doggy.
Um, this, this month of January statistics, we made eighty calls uh, for January. That was our busiest month of the year. Uh, that put us in an average of two point, two point six calls a month. Uh, sixty-four of those incidents occurred in the city and uh, twelve occurred outside the city limits. Uh, we attended four mutual aid incidents. Uh, we had zero smoke detector installations and we responded to eleven incidents after ten o'clock at night, uh, and before uh, seven in the morning in the overnight hours. Uh, we had a busy month here as we attended five structure fires. Uh, and to your statistics, we requested it, uh, one is, was inside the city limits and then four, uh, were outside the city, either in the county uh, or, or, or in other cities, uh, or towns in the county. There were five grass fires, one vehicle fire, thirty-six uh, medical assists that we, we responded with the medics. Uh, with seven motor vehicle accidents, eight public assists. Uh, we responded to thirteen false alarms and four calls of some type of an investigation and one hazardous material response. My statistics are off here of the very last category and I apologize. We did acquire one member, uh, I believe it was either in October or November. Uh, and we acquired two members uh, in February this month, and that's where the total of twenty-five ended up. If you look previously, it was like twenty, with all the zeros, it doesn't really add up. But twenty-five comes from where we're sitting today with the new memberships and then the one I failed to record to y'all. And that's uh, January's statistics.
Okay, on your half mat? Was that in the city, out of the city?
That was in the city. That was a gas leak.
Yeah.
A natural gas leak.
On the grass fire, is that in the city or outside?
Uh, that's, I'd have to look that up. I, I will have to carve those out, each one, if that's.
Obviously.
Yeah, I'm not really sure where the exact location of those events.
Okay.
Um, and I'd like to add, uh, just to follow up, that the application, uh, the Eastland Fire Department has submitted the application to become a Texas Commission on Fire Protection Certified Training Facility. So we'll be looking forward to going through that process and acquiring that. And uh, we have applied to uh, host the basic firefighter structural certificate class, uh, fire instructor and fire inspector. And those, those benefits to the city is obviously the fire structures will certify our members to teach the, at the training facility that we're creating. And then we're hoping to certify some fire inspectors that will shore up our fire inspection program uh, and, and kind of strengthen that program. With only one inspector in the city, it's very difficult to accomplish a lot of things we'd like to see in the future. Uh, the Eastland Fire Department on March first, second, and third, it's a three-day class, will be hosting an all-hazard incident commander class. There'll be a total of eight students, five uh, from the Eastland Fire Department and three from two additional fire stations in the county. And when, so once this class is completed, we will have eight certified all-hazard incident commanders in Eastland. So all staff plus uh, four additional volunteer members will be certified at that in all-hazard incident commander level. So that, that'll be a huge benefit to what we're. Uh, we're in the process and, and uh, find out and finally getting, a lot of our challenges have been with our vendors to close these grants out. And we're in the finite process that's closing out the twenty-five thousand dollar ARPA grant, uh, fifty-eight thousand dollar AFG grant, I've worked with Leslie today, and then our ten thousand dollar Adeline Community Grant, which has put our mobile repeaters in multiple vehicles to improve our communications out in more isolated areas uh, and improve our battalion into a um, a uh, a, a, a stronger support system for the command in these multiple agencies events, like the training enrollment that we participated in back in August, those events. So those grants are coming to work. Uh, out of the grant, we got four um, APX four thousand Motorola radios that are the P twenty-five digital capabilities and some of the, so we're strengthening up some of our equipment and some of our uh, capability, capability. And then the last thing I have is next weekend, Saturday, February twenty-fourth, we're hosting our third annual chili cook-off. Um, it's just a fun event for the community. There's no uh, registration fee. We just ask that you make like about a size crop pot full of chili after the judging and everyone uh, just enjoys, uh, just sits and enjoys chili. We do it in February because we look forward to a little frigid, but I think it's going to be quite tropical for our chili event. But outside of that, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate all you're doing. And I would invite the commissioners to, or encourage, I don't invite all, Joe invited you, but uh, go look what they're doing at the fire station and learn about the repeaters and why all that matters and what they're able to do now. Cause Eastland is able to do some pretty neat stuff and he's put together a pretty good organization of what they can do down there and, and the capabilities that they're, they're developing, having a training thing now, all the stuff he's doing. It's a pretty, pretty good stuff for Eastland, for the county as well.
Yes, it is.
I just assume for the county. Anything else for Chief Wilson? This court, and then going to it. All right. Not everybody wants.
I make a motion with James.
Second.
And motion James, second from Richard. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All at the same time, motion carried. Thank you all, appreciate it.